Good evening and welcome to the Covington City Council meeting for December thirteenth. In compliance with state laws, city council's special and regular meetings are held in a hybrid format with in-person, telephonic and virtual options for public viewing and participation. With that, this meeting is called to order and Christopher, you could please call the roll.
So member Solcass here.
Member Porter.
Here.
Home member Hertzoff here. Home member Herja Halden.
Present.
Home member Simomo.
Here.
Mayor Protim Smith.
Here.
Mayor Wagner.
I am here.
We have a call here.
Thank you. You could all please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for that. With that, uh, next is approval of agenda. Regan, do we have any changes tonight?
Uh, not a change, but just a, a heads up that there's a minor Scrivener's error on item C five. Uh, it should say Griffin Heating and not Pinky's Plumbing. That's on, uh, just on the blue sheet. So the, the motion and the agreement are correct. So it shouldn't change anything, but just a heads up.
Thank you. Look for a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Been moving the seconded to approve the agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The agenda has been approved. Thank you. Next up is public communication. We have with us an update for Lake Point. Gentlemen, welcome. Who's speaking? All of you?
Why not?
Thank you for being here tonight.
Uh, yeah. Good evening. Thank you, council, uh, for having us. Um, I believe there's a presentation.
Yeah.
Going to be presented. So I'll wait for that to come up. Um, while that's being brought up here. Uh, my name's David Greenstein. Uh, I'm the senior project manager for Brookfield Properties, um, and working from our Federal Way office. Make sure I know this. Not a QDF, not a PowerPoint. Social. Okay. Sorry for the technical difficulties. Uh, so like I was saying, uh, David Greenstein, uh, senior project manager of Brookfield Property Development. I'm here with colleagues from the joint venture, uh, with Paul. Uh, the joint venture, uh, between the two companies was established back in July. And, uh, this year, um, and we've taken over for a former, former developer Oak Point. Um, it's been a process to kind of get it to speed. I joined the project, um, late September, early October. Uh, I have been getting up to speed for many months now. I know some other members, uh, over here, including working with Don Vondren and some of the public works related projects and some of the planning, uh, around other development projects, including maybe one of those five, and we'll get into that shortly here. Um, so with that, uh, I'm going to kind of just walk you through a little bit of the project overview. Brookfield, as a company, I'll pass it over to our colleagues over here at Toll, and then after that, we'll kind of tell you about what happened in 2022, a little bit of what we are going to anticipate in 2023, and then after that, happy to take any questions, curiosities about the project. Okay. So, um, as you guys can see over here on the first slide, Brookfield Properties. So who is Brookfield? Well, we're kind of a silent giant, very, very large company, um, based out of, um, Canada. Uh, I've been with the company for now about four years, uh, and I've worked a lot in San Francisco, but I've also worked on projects, um, in the west, western Pennsylvania region, and specifically I've worked on land development projects, um, and mixed use development projects. So this one is very similar to the projects I worked on in San Francisco. Um, and I will tell you that from what Brookfield stands for, all of this is consistent across the projects. Uh, the, what we do, how we do it, and why we do it. Uh, and you guys can read through these little bits if you'd like to, but speaking from my personal experience, um, working for Brookfield, um, we are a, um, uh, think global act local company, um, very, very large, as you guys probably have heard. Um, and with that, we, we look to try and do stuff within the community that fits the local experience. We, we are trying to create something that is for, uh, the, the people who are going to live and be in the area. So the values of the company, the values of the individuals are of utmost importance to Brookfield and, uh, and to me personally. So, um, when I come and work on any project, I take it extremely seriously and I really appreciate feedback and want to participate in the public process because I want to deliver something to the public that you guys will appreciate for years to come, and we can see age with some sort of beauty associated with it. So, um, that's the, the broad, the broad strokes of, of Brookfield. We're a very imaginative company. We want to try and, um, discover new ways of building infrastructure, uh, and providing a community for everyone here to, to live in that will be beneficial. With that, uh, so who is Brookfield locally? So, um, the Federal Way office, uh, is actually, was actually established for the Taha Lee project. If you guys are familiar with that project down in Bonnie Lake, massive project. Uh, I just got to tour it, uh, recently, um, back in September, and it is quite astounding what they're doing out there. That project has been going on since the late nineties, I believe. And, um, I will say that the, from a master plan community is one of the best I've ever seen. And I'm coming out of the San Francisco Bay area, uh, where I've seen some of the most amazing projects, and this one definitely, um, fits in tune with the, the values of, uh, Brookfield. Um, the local, uh, team here is myself, uh, Scott Jones, who was unable to attend tonight. He fell sick. Uh, I promise you we'll get that chance to leave him soon if you haven't already. Um, and then we've got, um, Trent Edwards, who's the president, uh, and, uh, COO of Brookfield, who's kind of oversees the region, who's got reports to, uh, locally here, Jim Kelly, who is the project manager. Um, he knows the ins and outs of most of the contracting community. He's been working for decades here. Um, and it's been very helpful to learn from him and to learn about how he goes about finding the best opportunities to build projects. Sylvia is our development coordinator. She'll be working a lot with me, uh, just helping with permits and things of that nature. And then, uh, we've got other folks, Julie Kelly, uh, senior land acquisition manager, uh, Marita, who actually helped put this presentation together with myself. And Marita, who's marketing, our marketing director, and then a couple of behind the scenes folks, Alfred and Corey, who will be working a lot on our finance and accounting side. Uh, and with that, I'm going to pass it over to both.
Okay. Um, good evening, uh, Mayor Wagner and, and council members. Uh, my name's John Harkness and I'm a entitlement manager for Toll Brothers. So, um, David kind of talked about our JV that we formed, which is Toll Brothers and, and, um, Brookfield Property. However, I'm going to step back a little bit and Toll Brothers got involved with this project about a year ago, um, when we worked with Oak Point, previous seller, and with the city and worked through our feasibility process. So we've, we have been working, like I said, for at least a, a year now on the project through the feasibility and, um, um, understanding what the city's vision was for the property. And then more recently, we, we partnered up with Brookfield. David's now, um, moving the project forward. So they, Brookfield will be the lead and will be the JV. What, and where Toll Brothers is going to be focusing on is, uh, where I think our strength is, and that's in the housing. Um, we'll be continuing to partner with, with, uh, Brookfield and working with them on the vision, on the, on the retail and the commercial. But Toll Brothers, um, if you don't know anything about the company, we've been, um, in building homes for about 50 years. Um, in the Northwest, we built homes for about, about 10 years. Um, however, uh, David kind of alluded to this with the local presence. We've, we have, um, a group at Toll that has been working in this area, myself included, for about 25 years. And most of that group, uh, has actually worked together. So we've been in almost every jurisdiction in Pierce County, King County, Snoamish County. And so I, similar to, to Brookfield, we've got a very local presence. Um, we've got experience locally. We've got, um, you know, we've got great talent, but we also have the backing of a national company. We've got the capital, we've got the resources. We've got, um, um, a team that now when you, when you merge that with, with Brookfield is, um, very capable of project design. Let's see. Let's, uh, why go to the next slide? Um, I won't go through all the, the titles here and they're, they're not here today. I've got, um, Aaron Hollenberry, who's our vice president of entitlement. And Andy Melville, who's our, um, community planning manager. I think what's important here is the people that we have here. These are all heads of, of Toll Seattle. So we've got, we've got our marketing heads. We've got our, um, executive team. We've got, um, our community management, land development. These are all, um, they're all leaders in, in our, um, in our office, and most importantly, they're working, um, they're working now to try to figure out or try to deliver Covington's vision for, for Lake Point. And I think at the end of the day, that's really what's most important here. A lot of work and a lot of time is going into, into Lake Point and what the city wants to see, what the citizens want to see. And so we will, uh, work together with Brookfield to deliver that to you. Um, so with that, I'm going to turn it back to David and he's going to go through, like you said, kind of where we were and where we're going, and then we'll answer your question.
You got a brief five things? Thank you. Okay. So lots happened, uh, as John alluded to prior to me joining the team. Um, actually it's been very pleasant to be joining with, by the way, um, including the city, uh, planning group that I've been meeting with, uh, bi-weekly. So, um, and they, thank you for the planners who are not here, but they have been very helpful in allowing me to understand this project. Cause you enter into a DA and a lot of things happen and work moves forward and all of a sudden you, you, you know, wake up and you're at, you know, the middle of the project, even though that's when construction begins. Um, so with that, uh, let's talk a little bit about what's been going on in 2022. So when the project team, uh, in total, the JV kind of took over, um, Goodfellow Brothers was on the site. They had been already bringing on dirt and continuing to move the project forward, and that is continuing. So while we've been working with the same contractor to continue to bring on dirt. So if you guys aren't too familiar with the project, we need a lot of dirt. Uh, if you know anybody who has dirt, give them my card. Um, and with that, you know, the, the reason for this is ultimately, um, a lot of the site we need to raise grade to ensure that we can meet all of the requirements of, uh, stormwater as well as just the, the general ability to have water flow away from the community. Uh, we have the beautiful lake that is not changing. There will be a lake. It will always be Lake Point from that purpose. Um, and, uh, yeah, the, the other, um, key infrastructure pieces that we've worked on this summer is to care for surcharge, uh, and preload, which is because we've got a thin veneer of what we call peanut butter at the project, and we need to squish that peanut butter, uh, to allow ourselves something to build on top of. I'm an infrastructure kind of geek nerd, so these kinds of things I get a lot of enjoyment out of, um, and the geotechnical engineer. This project has been getting me up to speed and it's pretty, pretty cool to see how we're going to put this together as we begin to bring material on site and see the project evolve just from the land side. Um, but beyond just the grading side of this, which we've brought in about a fifth of the material we need just this year, and, uh, we project that we're going to get somewhere between a half a million or so, uh, yards of, of dirt. For anyone who doesn't know what a, a yard of dirt is, kind of explain it in terms of like houses of dirt. Would be like a regular 2,000 square foot house would be like 300 yards of dirt. So, um, we need a lot. Uh, and, uh, with that, that'll get us to the next step, which is all the new infrastructure, which is a huge endeavor for this project. There is a lot of infrastructure. There's a lot of things that all tie together. And, uh, the, the first place we'll go in is up the hill to make a, uh, grading connection, even Maple Hills Five, uh, development, as well as just the Maple Hills development as a whole. Uh, and that will give us the opportunity to finish the Covington Connector, which Don and his team has been working on for several years now and are planning to finish, I believe, the SR 18 roundabouts there soon. And if anyone's been driving through that area, you've probably seen some of the new artwork that's coming together. It's pretty cool looking. Uh, and, um, we're looking forward to making that tie-in, hopefully, uh, getting the permits in spring of next year. Um, and that will allow us to start summer and move through for probably going to be about a year of construction to fully build that out. But that will create the opportunity, really, uh, is that Lake Point Boulevard. Uh, we're working with Seuss Creek on some key pieces of infrastructure related to a lift station. Um, and there are, uh, a number of other obvious agencies, private, public, that we have to work with PSE and, uh, Water District, and I'm getting to know everybody and all the folks who are going to make that streak come together, allow us to, to develop out, uh, what we are calling phase two. Uh, and phase two is being entitled right now. Um, the toll team has been, who are the experts at this, uh, are putting together an opportunity for how we're going to do that, which is going to be challenging. Um, the product that's being developed here, which they will have an opportunity to tell you about if you're interested, um, is a little bit different than I think what Covington has potentially built before. And because of that, um, it's going to take a little bit more time to come up with a thoughtful way to do that with our DA and with just with the amount of resources we have in the city of Covington. Um, so it's kind of where we're at right now. Maple Hills Five is moving along. We expect to bring that to you guys soon. Uh, hopefully to a hearing in the, uh, the new year, and, uh, that will kind of kick off the first, um, first real phase of, uh, construction, which will be preparing that lot for, preparing that, for that plot for the, the lots. Um, very exciting. And, uh, if there's anything else that people would like to add to that, you're welcome to. We can go to the next slide. Um, year to come. So that was a little bit of 22 and 23, but, um, the rest of 23 will be continuing the phase two entitlements, as I talked about. Um, we have a lot of other planning related items. As you guys know, this, and as I've heard, the city of Covington and the folks who live here are very interested in what the commercial and detail piece would be. I am too. Uh, we don't know yet, um, but we are anticipating that with, uh, the infrastructure going in in a timely manner, that will give us a way better shot of knowing what it's going to be sooner than later. I mean, it is really critical to get the infrastructure going permitted and starting construction to allow us an opportunity to explore what the retail has. Now, we have seen plans. You guys have all seen plans, I'm sure, of what the retail could be, renderings, all the fun stuff. And, um, there is no real reason to change it broadly. I mean, most of the stuff's going to be multi-family, senior living, restaurants, all that stuff, where it is, how the streets are configured, that all could be modified a bit in the commercial areas, but we just don't know yet. And we will get a better idea again, once infrastructure is really honed in, uh, from the, uh, design side and then allowed to be permanent structure. And then we'll be able to move that forward more quickly. Um, the other critical elements, um, are the gateways. Uh, as you guys have seen, one gateway kind of going in there on the western side, and then we'll have an eastern gateway element as well. Um, and then we are working through a lot of stuff probably in the next few months with, uh, PSE, which is going to be a huge piece. Power, the gas, all the utilities here are extremely complicated, um, but don't need to be, um, if we are able to, um, get a lot of consistency across the planning and design phase. Um, and then, you know, last but not least, I think another critical element, and that's something that is extremely important to me, is meeting and understanding the needs of the, the city. And so there are broad needs and, uh, as I continue to meet with the different folks here at the city of Covington, um, whether it be planners, whether it be inspectors, engineers, whomever. Um, please do feel free to reach out to me. Um, I am curious to know what's going on in the city. Um, been up here for the last couple of weeks, just exploring the whole entire area. Went up to Tiger Mountain last weekend and roamed through the snow with my dogs. So I, I, I am an outdoor person and I think, you know, we'll see. I, I hope that the, this development has an opportunity to really embrace the outdoors in some capacity. Uh, what that means from the retail side, we shall see. But, uh, you know, I'd also like to learn about what the city kind of has historically. I know it's a young city, grand, grand scheme of things. Um, but, uh, it would be very interested, interesting to, to learn a little bit more about it from the individuals who make it. Place. Next slide. All right. Questions?
I don't have any questions. Sorry. All right. Um, appreciate that. That was great. And welcome. And we're glad to see, uh, this project continue to move along. It's something we've been planning for and working on for, okay, okay. Um, so it's glad, we're glad to see the, the dirt is moving, that sort of thing, and things that progress. So I'm just curious, um, a couple of questions. Said you're from San Francisco. Uh, that's where I met my life. So I've been, I'm just wondering some of the projects you worked on down there. So we see what.
Absolutely. Yeah. Yeah. So I've spent the last six years of my career, um, working in San Francisco on two very large mixed-use development projects. One, which went on pause, was the Candlestick Point redevelopment project, uh, which massive, you know, that Five Point and Lennar kind of on the side, uh, only 3% of the landmass of San, or the opportunity, 3% of the landmass of San Francisco. That's how big those projects were. They've hit, they hit some snafus along the way. Um, and then I moved over to a project called Pier 70 and Dog Patch. Um, and that's where I've worked on the, the infrastructure, uh, for the last four years, delivering the streets and, uh, preparing to build all the parks and open spaces. We actually just received our, uh, notice of completion from Public Works, the streets, which was a huge deal. Uh, you know, $70 million in infrastructure over there, and that was, don't, you don't get a, one of these NOCs in San Francisco every day. So I was extremely happy, put a lot of work, tireless effort into that, a lot of work left to do, but, um, I, I am loosely involved in that project in both right now. Still a little bit, but, um, focused on this project.
Okay. Cool. Um, the, you mentioned one of the things I, I think Toll Brothers talked about Covington's vision for the area. I'm wondering what this, between the two groups now, what is it you're hearing? What's the themes that's coming out of what Covington's vision would be? And I've heard a couple elements so far, but I was wondering if you've gotten any strong sense of what Covington's vision for this area is.
Covington as the city's vision?
Yeah, or just the community, you know, just, yeah.
Well, I've heard it indirectly. I haven't heard it from anybody specific, but generally that folks want good places to eat. That seems to be the, the resounding, we want, we want restaurants that, that are delicious. Which, listen, I, I agree. I would love that as well, and I think that will be a focal point for sure, especially with ground floor, ground floor retail next to a lake. Uh, to not have good restaurant opportunities, there would be a waste. I, I would expect that to be.
The other thing, um, that, that comes up over and over is, uh, some type of uh, place that has things for teens and young adults. So some type of, and so I'm, I guess I rephrase that. There will be a strong demand for use of those, um, of that area if there are retailers that, that service that. So movie theater is the one that comes up all the time, but something around those, what, or bowling alley, you know, something, I'm, I'm obviously not thinking, uh, totally, I don't fully understand all of what they want, but that, that's another one that's kind of.
Are they part of a pickleball fad yet?
Well, that's what this, this city is becoming. We want to become pickleball central. So.
Hope it's not a fad, because otherwise we're investing a lot in pickleball.
Yeah. Yeah. Um, so something to that effect, that there is, is a lot of our youth go out of Covington to, and to rent or elsewhere to go to Landin or Camp Station. And so there's a pent up demand in Covington for things for teens and young adults.
And would you, uh, would you say it would be more focused on the inside opportunity or both?
Um, I don't know. I'd have to see what the outside, but right now I think there, what we're hearing is primarily, yeah, there's someplace where they can meet their friends.
Yep.
Uh, have, uh, safe entertainment or something to do, um, and then maybe go after it. So, got it. But yeah, those non-chain restaurants, maybe kids entertainment, um, but maybe some higher end stores, I think is what this, the community is looking for. But it's also got to fit in that area as well, in this community as well. So I really appreciate the, the understanding and appreciation for the outdoors, because, you know, that's, uh, one of the things that attracts people to this community is that we're just, we've got a nice mix here. So, so continuing to focus on those things, um, I think we'll go far. So, and then just one last question, um, and I sure there's some regulations for it, but why can't you take dirt out of a current lake and put that, you know, just make the dirt the lake deeper?
It's a good question. Going deeper may not, you may not find the type of material that I'm looking for. Um, and also you can only go so far deep where you have to widen the lake, come back.
I knew there was a.
I'm shortening my answer. I'm sure there's something extremely more scientifically accurate than that, but.
That's enough for me.
Okay.
Thank you. Um, so you did mention a year before it was completed. I heard that time and are you, and you were talking about that, uh, when you were talking about the roundabout and the art going in there, but were you referring to the road, Lake Point Boulevard being done?
Yeah, it's going to take about a year to fill Lake Point Boulevard.
Okay. And that's once we get everything.
Once it's permitted and we, we can, yeah, once we get a permit, we'll, we'll be ready to contract and go. I mean, it's easier to get contracts going than it is to get permits. So when we, when we have an idea like, yep, it's going to be issued by this date, we're already way out in front of it. Bit everything out and we're going to go get this moving. And the other thing that's important is, is, as you guys know, probably in the construction world a little bit, is that, uh, it is very difficult these days to know what to procure early. Uh, there's a lot of materials that are difficult, um, to acquire now that used to be off the shelf. And so the better we can project and understand and come up with reasonable timeframes, the easier and better it is for us to deliver things more quickly. Otherwise, we have more of an opportunity to delay if we're like, oh, we were going to have a permit in June, now it got pushed to September. That material that you wanted to buy is gone now because we couldn't enter into a contract. So these kinds of things are incredibly, uh, complex and critical for us. So, um, there's a lot of items that we, we went out of our way to procure, um, materials before we had a permit because we knew we needed it. We knew it wasn't going to change. It's an op, it's an item that wouldn't be different, but we do that for the purpose of trying to not get caught up with, oh, now we have to wait four months more. So, but yeah, a year is the rough estimate for the Lake Point Boulevard to make the full Covington connection. Which I know is also a very important part. People are, are really wanting that connection piece because it will obviously allow traffic to flow much more freely. And so another reason why, you know, Brookfield wants to try and put that one down sooner than later.
I, I can appreciate that because we're in the same boat with, with hearing in my work too. Uh, but I, but I was wondering more specifically about needing the additional dirt. Are we, we're in place with enough dirt and compaction for Lake Point Boulevard? Because again, it's the residual, like getting it ready for the retail to go, because you just don't need a lot of dirt, right? And that, that.
Yes. So we'll be, I'll, I'll be brief with it. The, the, uh, Lake Point Boulevard had to be preloaded, surcharged, as I talked about earlier. So the, the remaining material on top gets pushed over to finish the road. So we're, we're more or less there.
Okay.
Um, it's just not in the right place. Uh, but yeah, we could pretty much hit it tomorrow at a burger.
Thank you.
Yep, of course.
One question. So once Lake Point Boulevard is in, um, what will happen next? Will it be construction of the homes or the residential um, around the lake? What, what, we get asked a lot, what's going to happen first? Will we see restaurants? Will we see homes?
Great question. While Lake Point Boulevard is being constructed, constructed, we expect Maple Hills will be the first kind of mini lot. I know everyone really thinks about that as part of the whole development, but it will be going on around the same time. The phase two part is, uh, expected to be going through its entitlement process, which is, as I mentioned before, a little bit of an unknown. We don't know exactly how long that's going to take, but we're projecting it to be under construction probably by fall of next year, the phase two area, which would set us up to get a final plat sometime in 24, so that we could start. Yeah. Uh, and so then I, I don't know how long it takes to build the type of product that Toll has at the moment, but I would assume. Yeah. So if you, we're going to do the quick math, fall to start construction, we're going to need about six to nine months to get it ready for building permits. And then the others, nine months to 12 months to finish it. So we're looking at somewhere probably in about spring of 25, maybe, seeing the first homes come together.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. And don't hold me to that.
Uh, would you explain the process that, uh, is utilized to advertise, solicit, get businesses interested, how they're brought into the development?
I will do my best. This is a better question for Scott, uh, who's not unable to attend a day. Um, however, um, broadly, the way we create interest is by going out and actually finding the right businesses. Um, you, we can do, there's a number of different ways to do it. You can, um, you can get letter of like a, kind of like a pre-LOI, letter of intent from a business to say, we're interested. Get a bunch of those for a bunch of businesses, and that creates kind of the opportunity for someone to want to develop the whole commercial portion. Uh, that creating and generating interest is extremely important. Commercial portion, uh, that creating and generating interest is extremely important. However, this project, uh, could be done in various ways, and so because the commercial is so big and broad, it can be done in chunks, it could. Be done as a larger commercial development, um, and so I'm not quite sure what exactly the, the next full step would be. But generally creating. As I mentioned before, the infrastructure part is actually the best, the best sell. If we, if we're trying to sell dirt without a street that goes through it. Everyone's gonna be like, well, let me know when that's done, because then I'll be interested. So that's actually the best selling point of this, at this juncture, because I think broadly the product that Toll's putting together. The lake and the opportunity for waterfront. Is a pretty easy sell for a lot of commercial development. But we need to show a little bit more at first, and so I think we'd probably get a lot more interest. By summer, fall of next year, uh, is when we anticipate seeing more of an opportunity to push it forward, because if we do it at this point, then people might get. Tired of waiting and time kills all deals, isn't really the way to look at it, and I just don't think it's the opportunity right now to go and start looking for those until we're a little bit ready to. To sell, to sell land and get that doing.
Okay, and then how often can we expect reports from you?
How often do you want them?
Best answer, and Regan will get with you and let you. Right, Regan?
So you want us to dictate? Selena could correct this, but part of the DA, I think, is an annual report, uh, I believe we had the last. Uh, when something big came on, maybe there was a semi-annual report as well.
I would prefer semi-annual personally. I think every six months.
Yeah, Selena and I can work with you guys, we'll, we'll schedule what needs to.
I, I also believe that while it could be every six months, it also could be when there's something important and that comes up, I, I, I like milestones. To be reported to, positive ones and ones where you need constructive help with things, I think both of them would be great in hand, so.
Yeah, we'll get it.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Do you actually have your points with you?
I don't with me at the moment, but I need to get some. They don't just say San Francisco on them right now, I need to get some more that are more specific to the development.
David, gentlemen, thank you all very much for coming tonight, great to see you and hear an update. And here that Lake Point is continuing to move forward.
Look forward to keep on working on it, thank you so much, everybody.
I look forward to the ribbon cutting. Thank you.
All right.
Have a great evening. Next up is our first of two public comment period, speakers will state their name, address and organization. Comments are directed to the city council, not the audience or staff. And comments are not intended for conversation or debate and are limited to no more than four minutes per speaker. And first up is Laura Moser, welcome. Thanks for being here, Laura.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, like Jeff said, I am Laura Moser. I'm a WM Public Sector Representative. And my work address is at seven oh one, Second Street Northwest in Auburn. And first I just want to say thank you for opening your solid waste contract to a transparent and competitive procurement process. I was around ten years ago when you wanted to enter into an RFP process. But discovered there was no wind down contract with your current hauler, allowing the city to move forward from a W U T C. Regulated system into a city franchise system, but you fixed that. And now you have this opportunity for an open transparent procurement process. On behalf of all the women and men at WM South Sound Hauling Site. We are excited at the prospect of collaborating to deliver collection services to your community. Our local district in Auburn is only fifteen minutes from your city hall, so we're just right down Highway eighteen. We took your RFP process seriously. We submitted a proposal based on the outlined contract and scope of services required. Only after spending time participating in your Q and A period to ensure we had a full understanding of your requirements. We delivered a responsive, comprehensive proposal. Focused on our commitment to service excellence, collaboration and value for Covington. I have worked in the solid waste and recycling industry for twenty-seven years. And it would be an honor to share my experience and knowledge with you. As you embark on a new environmental services partnership for the Covington community in twenty twenty-four. Excuse me. It is my sincere hope that you move forward with finalizing a contract with WM, the only company to submit a proposal. So I thank you for your time and for your consideration, and I'm always happy to answer questions, so thank you.
Thank you, Laura. Next up is John Oliveras. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, Governor, council members, I am the new general manager. With Republic Services here overseeing Covington, Kent and Renton and some UCC. I'm here as your official representative for Republic Services going forward, I want to discuss with you tonight. Why we did not submit a proposal during the current RFP process that just closed. As you know, the city has an option. To do a unilateral two-year extension with the current contract. That being said, Republic Services feels. That it would be in the best interest of the city to enact, to enact on that extension. We chose not to participate in RFP for several reasons. Republic Services could not bid against itself and deliver lower rates than are currently in use. In recent RFPs at other cities such as Federal Way, Auburn and North Bend. Submittals from others have come anywhere between thirty and forty percent higher than the current rates. We know there are several items that the city would like to have included in a new extension. Or contract such as stronger inclement weather language. Language that would discuss labor, possible labor disruptions. And recycle commodity value language. Republic Services would like to negotiate with the city to look at extending the contract and include other items of interest that the city could use. Could see a benefit to its residents. By extending the current contracts, it would benefit the city, its businesses, and most importantly, its residents by keeping rates lower. Than what the market is incurring in recent RFPs, including new language to benefit both parties. By keeping continuity with a current caller without disruption of service by changing providers. We would like to take a consultative approach and continue to partner with the city. Republic Services values our partnership with the city, and we thank you for that continued partnership and allowing us to serve your residents. Furthermore, going forward. Jim Hutchinson, who cannot be here tonight, our area director of municipal services, and I, John Oliveras, would continue to be the official representatives for Republic Services. Any future negotiations.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else in the current audience wishing to address council? Is there anybody online wishing to address council, please raise your hand. Seeing nobody raise their hand, we will have a second opportunity for a public comment towards the end of our meeting, thank you all very much. Next up is approval of our consent agenda consisting of items C one through C eighteen. Your motion to approve.
So moved.
Been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda, all those in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed? The consent agenda has been approved, thank you. Next up is new business item number one, consider appointments to the Arts Commission. This council wishes to take action tonight.
I would like to make the nomination. Move to appoint Paloma, I'm sorry, Paloma, I just wrote the. Your first name on my sheet, Moreno Rivera. To fill position number five for a partial term replacement on the Arts Commission with the term expiring May thirty-one, twenty point four.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to appoint Paloma to fill position number five for a partial term replacement. On the Arts Commission for a term expiring May thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four, Jennifer, would you like to speak to your motion?
Yes, um, Paloma came off as very passionate, energetic. Very clearly wants to get involved in the community. Um, she's described herself as very social and outgoing and would welcome the opportunity to really. Um, submerge herself into the local community and really. Elevate the voice of members, so I strongly recommend her.
Joe, would you like to speak with your second?
Yes, uh, one of the first things she said is that she's young and wants to get involved, she's new to the city and wants to find ways to promote. The city and find out how the city works, and to me, that's, that's endearing that you made this your home and you want to get involved right away. And just the energy that she had during the interview, I believe will pass along to the. Uh, committee, uh, the commission meetings, to pass along to the art that we're gonna be seeing in the city, and I, I think she would be a great fit on that commission.
Thank you, Jill, is there anybody else wishing to speak for or against the motion?
I would also like to add that it's very evident from her experience working in visual arts. Theater, it's not just about art. Uh, sculpture and painting, it's a different element, um, and with her. Social nature and being able to promote the city, um, and on about, I think that'd be a fantastic addition.
Thank you, Beth, is there anybody else wishing to speak for or against the motion? With that, it's been moved and seconded to appoint Paloma. Marina Rivera to fill position number five for a partial term replacement on the Arts Commission. With a term expiring May thirty-first of two thousand twenty-four, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Congratulations. Council wishes to take any other action tonight?
I'll nominate Andrea Eckert for. Position, I guess it'd be four, the partial term replacement of the Arts Commission with a term expiring on May thirty-first, twenty twenty-three.
You have a second? Been moved and seconded to appoint Andrea Eckert. To fill position number four for a partial term replacement on the Arts Commission with a term expiring May thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three, Sean, would you like to? Speak to your motion?
Yeah, so, um, similar to what we heard about, um. Paloma, Andrea is passionate about the community, um, she's involved in a number of volunteer activities like. The PTA, um, but what struck me about her interview for the Arts Commission is she's looking. Not only for something to give back to this community, but also something for her, so that she has something that actually. Is meaningful in her life as well, and so I thought that was a interesting take on someone's. Desire to get involved with the city as well, that this is something that she feels will help with her. Um, let's say, uh. Whole person, so I thought that was really telling, so I, I'd like to see her on the commission as well.
Thank you, I also, I saw her as just being very eager to get involved, she said that she loves to volunteer, she's the first one to say yes. Um, what was really refreshing is that she sees art as, um. Bringing an atmosphere that's welcoming and bringing joy to our community, so I, I like that. I mean, she also has some background in more of the visual arts, um, in theater, stagecraft. So again, a little bit different than the typical paintings and sculptures. Um, she's worked with, uh, Girl Scouts and various groups, I think she's just got a good rounded background for this.
Thank you, Dan, is there anybody else wishing to speak for or against the motion?
I was also, um, in addition to the art aspect of it. Uh, she has a strong background in event planning and administration and doing other projects, so again. Bringing that skill set to help complement what the Art Commission. Has been trying to achieve and likely will continue in the future, I think would be a great addition.
Thank you, Dan, is there anybody else wishing to speak for or against the motion? Been moved and seconded to appoint Andrea Eckert to fill position number four. For a partial term replacement on the Arts Commission with a term expiring May thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three, all those in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed? Andrea, congratulations. Council wishes to take any further action tonight? All right, thank you all very much for that. Next up is new business item number two, emergency management plan update. Andy, welcome.
Thanks for letting me be here tonight, I just wanted to give you a quick update on some things I was working on over the last few years. Uh, one of the big things I did was the COVID nineteen response for the city, I helped, uh. Relay information to the city and to Maureen to come up with how we would respond to it. Uh, I facilitated buying a bunch of test kits for the city, for the staff, so they could test if they were thick or exposed. We also worked with, I worked with the University of Washington and we held a vaccine clinic and test distribution. Day at our, our community center, along with Maple Valley and Black Diamond, we all promoted it together. It was a good event. Um, and then another item that we, I do right now is the winter weather, so I participate in. Fall whenever there's some significant weather pattern coming in, the National Weather Service holds. Uh, daily briefings for us to attend, so as soon as I get that information, I send it out to our maintenance team. So they can ready themselves for whatever might be coming, and I send it to Regan and Krista as well, so they're, so they know what's going on. And as you probably heard, we're supposed to have some eighteen degree weather next week and possible snow, so. I'll be on all those calls to relay that information forward. One of the big things that I'm working on now is our comprehensive emergency management plan update, it was last written in two thousand fifteen. And then it was extended out till two thousand twenty-two because of COVID, so. It's a framework of how we will all work together in the city to respond to some kind of emergency or disaster, earthquake, wind, severe, significant windstorm or such. So I'll send that out to the state for review. Uh, and then earlier this year, uh, several of our staff members. Uh, participated in ATC twenty and forty-five training, which is. Uh, building assessments after earthquakes and after, uh, wind or flood damage. So we all were at PewDiePie Fire Emergency Management, we put that on and. They showed us how to look at a building and determine whether it's should be evacuated or we shouldn't go in, or the public shouldn't go in. And how to post it, so everybody has a book that they can go out and. And evaluate off of a checklist and put a placard on it for the, for that. Uh, and we also did emergency operations center training, so several people went and learned how to work in logistics. Planning and finance and admin, so how to plan the event for, or the response for the next day. How to get the things that we need, and then how to, when people out in the field and operations call in and they need a specific piece of equipment. How, how to get all that and then obviously finance, how do, how do we get paid for? For, get reimbursement for the, for the disaster. Uh, and then in November, myself and a council member reporter and several citizens and a couple other. Uh, city employees, we all completed community emergency response training. So some light fire safety training, how to use a fire extinguisher, how to do search and rescue of a building. And then how to provide basic first aid to anybody that's hurt in a disaster. So we all got a certificate and did a, did a mass exercise on, on a Saturday, spent the day there. Uh, and then I bought, I got a grant, uh, two grants, and I bought. That part of the mission, a bunch of computers, so when, when we do build our emergency operations center. That will be all the technology, most of the technology that we would use to work in here to respond to a disaster. So Mason and I are still in the, we have the equipment, now we need to figure out how we're gonna put it together and what software we're gonna run on it and all that kind of stuff. But a lot of what I use in emergency management is already web-based, and I have access to it through the county, so. We won't be putting mostly forms and stuff probably on there, and then whatever Mason would like to, to put on it. Um, and then just some other things that we did throughout the year in emergency management is. Nationalized, I saw some of you guys when we, when we did that. Uh, Covington Days, I was here for that, Maple Valley Prep Fair, I was out there. And then I, I meet with Maple Valley and Black Diamond regularly, and we started some, some high level talks about a debris management plan, so if there's a. Probably an earthquake here and the city is inundated with a large amount of debris, how we will move it out of our three cities together. Other than that, do you guys have any questions for me?
Is there anything in the works for an additional method of getting emergency communications out to the community, aside from? You know, you say aside from Facebook, uh, is there? Any thought on having some kind of a sign up for emergencies, like email or some such thing?
So, if we have a lurking county that anybody in the city can sign up for, so if we had a, a large incident here. I can send stuff out to the staff, but I can't send it out to the. I can send stuff out to the staff, but I can't send it out to the, to the citizens. But I can call the King County Duty Officer and they will send out any message that I want on our behalf.
So King County Alert?
Alert King County.
Would you like to speak?
I just have a comment. I want to say thank you, all of this planning and, and looking ahead as a resident. It brings me peace. So thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Andy, thank you very much for the update. Really appreciate it. Always great to see you.
Great to see you.
Thank you. Next up is new business item number three, consider an ordinance adopting fiscal year two thousand twenty three operating and capital budget. Casey?
Thank you. No formal staff report tonight. All the changes that we made during the last conference meeting have been incorporated and really changing affecting movement to impact.
Counsel, have any questions for Casey? If not, look for.
So moved.
Seconded, Beth, Christina. Moved by Joe and seconded by Christina to pass an ordinance in substantial form. Is that attached here too, adopting the two thousand twenty three operating and capital budget? Joe, would you like to speak to your motion?
Well, the sooner we approve this, the sooner she can get started on the twenty four budget. You can take two hours off. It's okay. No, the budget is very good. We've made our, we debated it for what felt like, you know, weeks, but it was really just a couple hours during, on a Saturday. And we got a very good education on our budget. We're spending money wisely. We're going to continue to spend money wisely. And we are just doing very well. And hopefully, when, next year, when they audit us, they, instead of taking eleven months to do it, they'll do it in the three months that they're supposed to. And our budget will come back and we'll get even more awards for it. So I'm very happy with this budget and I'm looking forward to seeing what we can do.
Thank you, Joe. Christina, would you like to speak for your second?
Sure. As usual, Covington continues to impress me, the staff and how we work together. I'm very proud of our budget. I think it's a very responsible fiscal way on every other level. But I wholeheartedly approve it. Can't wait for twenty four. I wish we had, hopefully, a pocket of something else opens up that we just, you know, didn't anticipate. So many projects.
Thanks. Is there anybody else wishing to speak or? It's been moved and seconded to pass an ordinance in substantial form. Is that attached here too? Adopting the two thousand twenty three operating and capital budget. All those in favor state aye. Any opposed? Budget has been approved. Next up is new business item number four, to consider an ordinance amending chapter eight point one five of the Covington Municipal Code to add a compost procurement requirement.
Thank you very much, Mayor Wagner. To start off, this is before you tonight, and I would like to acknowledge Shelley Bates because her and the entire Public Works team has stayed on top of this and really brought this to everyone's attention and made sure that it got in before you tonight. Because, and this is important, we are required to adopt a compost procurement ordinance by January first of this year, or of next year, excuse me. Just a little bit of background, this is a new state law that is working on moving cities, counties, and businesses toward meeting the state's compost, compost goals. And so those are all set out in state law. And as part of this new requirement that was passed in March of this year, cities are required to opt out, adopt a compost procurement ordinance. And those really require a couple of things. One, it requires cities to consider using compost in city projects and really try to involve more compost in everything that the city is doing from public works projects to soil, to stormwater projects and everything in between. And the other is so the state can stay on top of what has happened based upon this. There are a bunch of reporting requirements and metrics that the city is required to report to the state every two years. And what the, another reason why we're here is because normally this would be some, a situation for larger cities, but the city of Covington, while its population is less than the requirement, the threshold that automatically makes the city subject to this, because we've offered yard waste services through our current holler contract, we're required to operate or to adopt this ordinance. And we, there was some question of whether smaller cities that offered these services would in fact be required. And I confirmed with Ecology Today through a conversation with one of their representatives that the Attorney General's Office has in fact interpreted this to apply to cities that just offer yard waste services and don't necessarily require it as a standard that all citizens must comply with. So what's before you tonight is a simple ordinance adding the compost procurement requirements to our code to comply with the new state law. And I would ask counsel to consider taking action on this nights, on this tonight, so we can stay up to date with state requirements by January one. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mark. Does anyone else have any questions, Mark, on that?
I have a question on the reporting requirement. So are you, will the city be obligated to report how much compost is coming in and how much is being used within the city for our own projects?
That, that's correct. It's only based upon what the city is doing. There are different requirements that apply to businesses to stay on top of these same kind of reporting requirements for these metrics. But the cities are, the city's requirements are limited to what we are, what we are buying, what we are using, and what processes we have to make sure that we are working toward meeting the states.
Counsel, would you take action tonight?
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded to pass an ordinance in substantial form as presented to amend, to amend chapter eight point one five of the Covington Municipal Code to a new section regarding compost procurement. Joe, would you like to speak to your motion?
The state said we had to, and if we don't, they will come and tell us that we need to do this now. So I, as much as I don't mind being on their bad side, I will stay on the good side for at least a couple of weeks in two thousand twenty three.
Beth, would you like to speak for your second?
Well, what Joe said as well, but I think it's the right thing to do if we start trying to move forward with sustainability and looking at our environmental impact as a city, I think it's just the right, it's the right thing to do, whether we would get penalized for doing it or not. So fully supportive of this.
Thank you, Beth. Is there anybody else wishing to speak for or against the motion? It's been moved and seconded to pass an ordinance in substantial form as presented to amend chapter eight point one five of the Covington Municipal Code to a new section regarding compost procurement. All those in favor state aye. Any opposed? The ordinance passes. Thank you. Next up is new business item number five, reviewing the solid waste request for proposals. I will recuse myself in turn, so Mr. Mayor Protem Smith. Thank you. And let me know when you're done.
All right, Regan, remind me who's doing it. You are?
Don.
Don, all right. Thanks, Don.
Thanks, Mayor Protem Smith and counsel. As you may recall, the solid waste contract was originally to expire on June twenty, June thirtieth, two thousand twenty two. Prior to that expiration, council directed staff to utilize one of the two optional two-year extensions with Republic Services and to begin an RFP, a request for proposal process to consider proposals for a new contract. So with the help of a consultant at Epicenter Services, we issued an RFP in September and went through a couple of rounds of question and answer periods during that process. The RFP proposals were due on December fifth. We received one proposal from Waste Management. Recology did not submit a proposal, but they provided a letter indicating why they did not submit. That letter is in your packet. Republic Services also did not submit a proposal, also submitted a letter indicated why they did not submit. That's in your packet as well. And most of that information was covered during public comment from John earlier. So now in your packet, there were four options that we have at this point. And I'll just read those four options from the blue sheet. Suspend the RFP process, extending the existing contract with Republic for another two years, and then start over with a new process in two thousand twenty four. Address the concerns raised in Recology's December fifth letter, then reissue an updated RFP with a shortened response time. Proceed with contract finalization with the sole proposer, Waste Management, and take a completed contract and rate package to council for review and approval, and suspend the RFP process immediately and enter into a sole source negotiation with Republic Service outside the formal procurement process. So if that, staff is just requesting input from council on how they would like to proceed.
I'm confused as to the, the statement in Recology's letter that it was not clear in the Q and A period that Mayor Wagner does or does not recuse himself. Because as council members, we, it's clear to us based on all decision making that's been made regarding waste management. So I guess I would like some clarity as to why it wasn't clear to potential bidders.
Don, if you're all right, I'll step in. That would be a great question for Recology at the end of.
But wasn't the Q and A with us?
The Q and A was with us and the answers that we provided were along the lines of that is up to each individual council member to recuse themselves or not based upon individual possible conflicts of interest. And it's, and it's not up to the city to tell any private holler who they have working on any individual project. And the city believes that was clear and Recology disagreed. But that would be a question to direct toward them.
There's no question.
I have comments. So I am disappointed in Recology's letter. And if there's a nice way to tell them that we're disappointed in them, I think we should. And I say nice because don't let me write it. But I'm also disappointed that we sent out a letter of, of recommendation or an RFP, whatever we want to call it, that we're looking to have a new contract. And that we want to see what you can do, what's your best, what's your best offer to us? Even if it's going against yourself, I'm disappointed that our current contract didn't, our, our current contractor didn't submit approval and instead pretty much just told us to do another two years when we had made a decision. And that, that disappoints me. I've had good success. We've had some good relationships with them and it just disappoints me that they didn't. And I, I understand our options here. But to me, that's, I, I think we need to go with the people who actually took the time to make a bid to us and actually did what we asked. And this, I mean, we can, I'm sure haggle a little bit here and there about prices or pick up days or something to that extent. But to me, it's, we asked for something and you chose not to do it. That means you don't want the contract to me. And I, I understand that that might not be what it is. But that's just how I feel right now.
Yep, yep. Sorry.
So dealing with contracts all the time at work, I, I completely understand the response by Republic. A lot of times when you go into a new contract negotiation, prices have gone higher. So pointing out that, hey, heads up, it's cheaper for you guys to just extend this contract and, and ride it out for another two years. But, you know, I, so I get it. I, the response makes complete sense to me. So I think we have, you know, multiple options on the table that we should consider.
Can I ask for the record, if we look at percentage difference as far as the amount, can we state what the difference is between between our new proposal and the current one that we have?
Don, I think you, you have the numbers in front of you. But I'll let Don look that up. And I forgot to state this earlier, but we do have our consultants joining us online. Jeff Brown and Jeanette Jurgensen too. If you have any questions to direct toward them, because they helped us prepare the proposal, distribute it, and answer the questions.
Well, while Don's looking at the percentages, the, the totals would be roughly about a million and a half per year that it would save the ratepayers for that two-year extension.
Should, if we went with Republic and extended that way?
Right. As compared to the current proposal from Waste Management. Right.
Yeah. And I think all I would add to that, because it's about forty percent, and all the pieces vary depending on which item you're looking at, right? There's so many, like if you've got a thirty two, whatever, but it's about forty percent, like Regan was saying, it's like one point three to one point five million.
Is that comparison apples to apples? And then basically the same service that we're getting now?
There, there are pieces that are within the, the proposal that are having more of the, some of the things that we were wanting considered. So it's not all, it's not all apples to apples in that regard.
So the difference between option number one, which is to suspend the RFP process and extend the existing contract for another two years, the difference between that one and option number four, suspend the RFP process immediately and enter a sole source negotiation with Republic Services. Is the difference just that in option four, we're, we're still going to do the same thing. We're going to suspend the process. We're going to stay with Republic Services, but we're going to negotiate with them for different rates than are in the extension?
And I'll take a stab at this in the mark if you want to jump in too. But basically, with the two-year extension, you have the provisions that were in the original contract, right? Those are all laid in there. You're just extending that for those two years based on what, what provisions were in that contract already. If you were to open and negotiate directly, then it's, then you're negotiating everything. You're, right, you know, every feature or whatever and whatever those rates and stuff are. So it, it's, it's more open ended as far as that negotiation, if you go that route.
Okay, so SLAs might be different from the original contract. Right? I don't, service level agreements.
I don't know if, if you have any thoughts on that. I mean, I didn't quite follow the last part as far as.
Could you explain what you mean?
So.
My apologies.
So the service level agreements that we're looking for may be different if we were to open up and renegotiate than they are in the, in our current contract.
Potentially, we don't know what a negotiation would look like. It would involve creating revisions to the current contract as it exists. Whereas the option number one was to, is to use the current contract that we've been using for the past. Well, it's going to be coming up on twelve, or more than, excuse me.
If I can just add, Debbie, to that, there are some stipulations that the council wanted added. So if we started negotiating contract, those would be part of the negotiations and rates will increase. So I think in answer to your question, yes, it will look different than our current contract with just an extension.
Is there an option five? Would it make sense for us to continue the agreement for the next two years and naturally renegotiate at the end of that expiration? I mean.
So that is, that is included in option number one. Essentially, what, what that leads itself toward is there's no decision that needs to be made to extend the contract tonight. We are, we're currently just about a year and a half into the current extension. But as we, as Don has made very clear at times in the past, whenever you're going through the RFP process, it takes several, two years to go through the process. And so we would basically be saying lining ourselves up for the two-year extension just based upon the time it would take to get another hauler.
I was just going to request clarification. I believe that the. I I was just gonna request clarification. I believe that the person that gave public comments said that we would have the ability. To add work stoppage and implement weather um. Policy language additions slash updates to an extension. Is that correct?
Uh, both the parties are will freely able to add any provisions that they are mutually able to agree to.
Okay.
The difference with the extension is it's just that we have our add our sole option, a council sole option, the ability to extend the contract as it currently exists. And we've revisited the contract several times over the past several years to make amendments when they're necessary.
Okay.
Others?
Last question.
Yeah.
Is there any one um differentiating factor that stands out that? Um, Waste Management would offer that maybe Republic doesn't offer? Um, I obviously we can't go through the contract in detail right now and say, hey, this is different. This is the same. This is different, but is there any? Is there like one grandiose thing that maybe Clementine just does want that we currently don't have that we could potentially have? In this proposal? That stood out to you?
Let Don speak to that, or we can have one of our consultants come in, but I also believe we haven't gone through the full process of reviewing.
Sure.
The procurement because it was came in eight days ago and so we haven't gone through the formal process of evaluating and checking for all the criteria and what.
Yep, go ahead, Beth.
Is it possible that we? I I really appreciate the work and effort that Waste Management went into the details of talking about how their company operates and their values and what they do with plastic and. I know that we've received some presentation from our current um carrier Republic in the past. I would really like to just see some of those things comparatively because. Um, I think it it's it's about the service to our community. It's about um the perception um to our residents. And I'm I'm not saying that are bad one way or the other. I'm just saying that that's something we need to consider, but uh also. The long-term health and impact on, I'm going to say the environment because that's something that's important and we have an opportunity. I I'm I do we have to make a decision today on this, especially if I'd almost. Feel like we if we could get some more information from Republic, then I might be able to make a better decision on whether. Moving forward in this contract would be great because I know we're talking about a million and a half dollars, but. If we're talking about a thirty percent increase on fifty dollars, that's fifteen bucks a month or a year. Per household is that enough to really? It might be, but I just feel like I need more information.
I I understand there's no decision tonight, so we're just providing direction to the city.
We're looking for for specific direction where which of these options the council would like to pursue and the reason why we're bringing this to you tonight. Is because time is of the essence, because every single time you go through one of these procurements, if a new hauler is coming in. It takes a significant amount of time to both trucks, get everything set up, to get your operations in place. So if this, if a direction decision is delayed, it could potentially impact. Or s- the ability of a new hauler to provide services. If the contract is shifted.
So this is just a logistical question. Say we come back in Jan- at the last meeting in January and we ask for and you guys have come back with all the information and we want to make a decision. On what we're what route we're going to go with. How long would it is, I'm going to say, we say we decide that we want to go with Waste Management over Republic. How long of a transition are we talking about? Is are we talking that we're still going to have to extend two years because it's going to take that time? Or are we talking that by the end of the contract with maybe six, eight months from that time, everything will be in place? What what are we talking logistics wise if we make a change?
If we interned in negotiations with Waste Management and present that to council, uh, the. Contract requires that it will be in place at the end of the current haulage.
If we, again, if we want to our consultants to help answer some of that as far as timing, we can bring them. Bring them in, they can probably give, but I think as as we'd said earlier, it's. You're going to have to take a a few months to work out with the new hauler, those details and everything, we'll look through that and then give them. Time like you say it's in spring or summer of this next year that yes, we're going that route. And then give them a ti- idea to basically bring all the resources in in place. That's kind of my understanding, but. Happy to bring uh them in to help answer what they need that if that's counsel design.
I can just summarize a all that timeline, so I I leave our current contract in June twenty twenty four. Uh, which means we need council would need to make a decision by roughly June of twenty twenty-three to give if there's a new hauler. That year, the meantime.
So I'm gonna, I'm going to rephrase my question. As a customer of Republic. Can we ask them to provide an apples-to-apples comparison to the other RFP? That are so that we can see exactly what. Might be getting. If we go with one route or the other, we have and I say that, say, for example. We visit in January, other January, and if we have the information and council can look at it side by side.
So essentially, that's what we did through the RFP process is asked for that because we laid out the criteria that gives us apples-to-apples proposals, right? Um, if if council moves forward with just the two-year extension, it won't be apples-to-apples. We'll we'll stick with what we have as opposed to what Waste Management submitted, which is different because it includes additional um stipulations that the council. Wanted, so um if I I don't know if you're where you where what angle you're going with that, Beth, but but if it's. The two-year extension, um, nothing changes in that if it's to keep the rates low. If council wants to start negotiating. Different pers- uh different elements of the contract, then it will it will all change and be apples-to-apples, which is the RFP process. Any question? So I'm hearing some consensus uh from the council. Um, I'm hearing a desire for more information and summarize this in a second. Uh, I'm also hearing consensus that there be a response to ecology uh about their concerns and basically. The mayor's uh expectation to recuse himself and has through this process, so I think we need to do that. Um, I would also recommend that we eliminate uh option number four. That we suspend the RFP immediately and enter into the sole source negotiations.
But that would then eliminate the contract extension and the appeal of the contract extension is. Three million dollars.
No, I'm saying the number one is suspend the RP process and extend the existing contract with Republic for another two years. And then we can start over with the process on that.
Oh, I thought you said four.
Yeah, the fourth. Eliminated.
Oh, eliminate option four.
We not, we're not considering.
I thought you meant choose.
No, 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 sorry. God, thanks for the perfect. No, I meant.
Okay.
Let's, we're not even thinking about that.
Okay.
That one.
All right, thank you. I was like, where did you get that?
Yes. Out of Lafayette. Um, so that's the consensus I hear. What I would suggest is that we for tonight do the second one. That we address recology's concerns. Uh, and then we reissue the RFP and that basically saying to recology, we we heard you, we're reissuing. You want to uh respond, you've got six weeks or whatever, however long we think. Uh, Republic is in the room, has heard our concerns, so they would have the opportunity to in what other whatever form. Respond as well and we do have, thank you for Waste Managers. And that would give us time to look at this as well because we've only had this a short period of time as well. So I'm open to ideas and suggestions, but that's what I would recommend you ask the city.
I think recology is not going to give us uh an offer and that's and in the roundabout term, they they had their opportunity. And they so screwed the pooch on that one, uh, but I personally think that um.
Let me do this. I'll amend it, uh amend that request then. Let's just respond to their. Their letter and ask if they're. Um, still interested in in uh submitting, submitting. Yeah, go ahead. Uh, just um a- as as we're talking about this, the the response is an interesting one because we we've already responded uh to their claims. So we would just resubmit what we've already sent them, which was not satisfactory to them. What we told them is what the state law is and what our current council rules and procedures are, that when there's a conflict, that person has to recuse themselves. That wasn't sufficient for them and we also mentioned that we cannot um require a council member in their private job. To recuse themselves on the private side. That's not, we we can't do that. So um we, I think I'm speaking correctly here, would not have a different response than that. In addressing their concerns.
Th- that's correct, Regan, and for council, staff doesn't lean on council one way or another. Each individual person to make decisions with regarding appearance fairness, conflicts of interest or otherwise. That's up to each council member and we're happy to consult on those issues as necessary under the ethics code or otherwise. But it's sit this city staff's position that council members ultimately are responsible for. Compliance with the different ethics laws that are in place.
Okay. Um, all right then, you know, amend that and I think uh what we are still hearing is that. We. As a council, need additional time and information to make an uh informed decision on this. Um, I know Beth asked that there be some type of analysis compared to our current level of service. So whatever we're getting right now compared to what is going to be in the Waste Management proposal.
So just the difference between Waste Management's proposal and what our current contract has?
With that and kind of current what we're getting now and then is that concurrent and what's coming in the Waste Management proposal? And if not, what's different between those two?
So you're just wanting to know like uh what features or what uh, right, so tho- those those um. Increment weather or whatever, those pieces, what are included in the rates?
And then what the overall cost of those. And go ahead.
Yeah, I was just going, and quite frankly, if they wanted to put in. Proposal together for a long term, not just the two-year. I mean, I want to know what they're going to bring to the table long term and if the rates go up, they're going to, they're going to probably go up anyway. Regardless, in two years, they're going up. You just know this, so. Uh, but it's also about the company itself, its po- its procedures, its practices. Because if we're looking at it long term, we need to make sure that we're.
But if I can just clarify just a little bit is that we could take what's existing contract and we know what's in that.
Right.
And we can compare that with what Waste Management presented and what those differences were. As far as then the negotiation of what it would be if we go back to Republic Services now to to know what those things would be. That may be time-consuming. It could take a while for us to get what that would be. So we could say what you're getting from Waste Management and those costs and those differences. But then to go back and see what it that would be like from um uh Republic Services was kind of the purpose of our.
Yeah, I guess. I guess I was just thinking that. Uh, it seemed to me, based on what our presenter had said, was that. Yeah, they and even Councilmember Howard Charles mentioned that you wouldn't really bid against yourself if you're the current provider. However, what that. That tells me it's mostly just focused on price and that there wouldn't be a change in service. Some of those things that this city is, those council would like us to. Include in an an addendum or if you, you know, as far as the the labor relations and implement weather clauses. That could open it up to be to be scrutinized and having them raise the rates anyway, so I guess I'm I'm. Wondering if that's. If they said they would do that and that's great if that's something that they can do and they would do without raising rates for the next two years, but is that? I want to see exactly what that would look like and how that would compare to any other thing that it did. Our information, I guess, is what.
But so I, there's a couple of points here that I would like to address. One, when you're looking for an apples-to-apples comparison, that. And looking for what that is, that is what the RFP process is meant to accomplish for us to evaluate that and that's a time-consuming. Going through qualitative and quantitative criteria. Um, and just to be clear, uh Waste Management's proposal is to be the new long-term hauler for a ten-year contract. They're not coming in to request a two-year extension.
Yeah, I understand. I was just thinking that if if. Republic Services did not. Fill out that RFP, then we don't have apples-to-apples if they didn't do that, so that's where we're in a. A different scenario here because it's hard for us to say, oh, yeah.
And 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 that's the pickle that that we're in and and so saying when we want to see apples-to-apples, we already did that process and got their responses. And we did not get apples-to-apples. What we got is you can um extend your current contract. You can renegotiate with us for a different contract or you can go with Waste Management. Those really are options at this point. I I do want to, Jeff Brown, our consultant, has his hand raised. He could address the council.
Uh, yes, can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, um, yes, this is Jeff Brown at Center Services. Um, actually, uh, some of this was just addressed, but I I think um there's been some clarity on the fact that you have. Uh, a two-year extension still available under current rates and the con- and the current contract. Then that contract expires. It cannot be passed. It it can't really be extended except for mutual agreement. And the rates are so low right now, that's not going to happen. Um, the purpose of the current contract was to get you out of a state-regulated system. I was involved in that ten years ago. Uh, and it was to give the option, the city the option to go through a competitive process to basically specify services. See what people offered and make a decision for the rate payers. So this RFP process was actually all about that, um, was kind of bringing the current contract to fruition. Writing a new contract, which we did, putting it out on the street with the RFP, and I wanted to make sure that was pretty clear is what we did. The RFP asked all the haulers, all the proposers to give us rates to fulfill the contract that we attached to the contract. So it's absolutely apples-to-apples, so that we wouldn't have a difference between contract terms, services and rates in our comparison. So it was really important to have everybody respond with rates to the base contract. And then use their proposal to outline what embellishments they wanted to do, what extra services they were going to bring to the table. What their strengths were or whatever else. So um, we've already done part of the process is is being discussed and as I've listened to this conversation. Um, it almost seems like um what it what has happened is Republic did not submit a proposal. Which would have been a really smart thing to do because they have the ability to bridge to a new contract using the extension you already have. They could bring all sorts of things to the table, all sorts of embellishments, but what we would have gotten out of that. Is that they would have given us prices for the new contract. We don't have that right now and so. We can talk about what it might be like to negotiate a contract, but we don't know what contract they want to provide rates on. It's not the one we provided. We don't know what those rates are going to be and how they're going to compare with somebody else. And what embellishments, excuse me, they're going to provide. So I just wanted to point this out that that was what the RFP was out uh was about, was getting apples-to-apples. Everybody submitting a proposal based on the same contract and being able to do a qualitative assessment. That didn't happen and that's why you have the options in front of you and. Um, I think it's a little bit awkward to go back and essentially ask Republic to provide a proposal. Um, outside of the process when perhaps maybe we just need to. Reissue the RFP with some s- some changes and say, if you want to play in the game, submit a proposal. Because otherwise we have no way to finish an RFP process here. We we're out of it. So I just wanted to make that clear for everybody since I was there ten years ago and I did do this and um that's. And I do procurements for pretty much most of the King County cities, so.
Thank you. Joe. So I was just going to say we've been, we've been asking for apples-to-apples and. So I was just gonna say, we've been, we've been asking for apples to apples and we're not going to get apples to apples. Because there was an opportunity. And as uh, Mr. Brown just said. You know, they could have, Republic could have just leaped right into that new contract right after, if we did an extension. They proposed the contract, we could have just extended the current one and put them to place in twenty twenty six, whenever that one came in, if that was an option. But they didn't. We don't have apples to apples. We're not going to get apples to apples. The best we're going to do is apples and, and oranges here. Because we can judge that the basis of, you know, we're going to get trash every week. We're going to get recycling every two weeks. We're going to get yard waste every two weeks or every week. I don't know. I don't have yard waste. But it's, we're gonna get those same basic services, but we're adding the things that we asked for. Things that our community asked us to ask for when we didn't get trash picked up for two weeks because uh, strike in San Diego. We didn't, we're asking for inclement weather issues, so we want to know more what's happening. We got that from one of them. And the other one just said, just extend us for two years and then go back and do it again. We want it now. That's why we're asking now. I understand that we have these options and you don't want to bid against yourself, but in all honesty. We're not going to get apples to apples and we won't get apples to apple unless we. Do this in two years. And I hate to say this, in two years, everything's going to cost even more than it does right now. So. We asked for one thing. We got the one thing from one, from one group. We got another group telling us, well, do this instead. And then we got another group telling us, hey, your mayor's works for this company. We don't want to even bid for you. I, I, it's, to me, it's. We can't reward behavior of, we want this so we can compare. We can't compare if you don't give it to us. So that's just where I'm at.
We're getting buzz up here. So, what was it outside?
Yeah, it's not in here.
Oh, okay. Can you fix the outside? No, no worries. I'm glad you all are here. There's no buzz. So if I'm hearing you right, Joe, you're leaning toward option three.
Uh, that's where I'm leaning. I, I, I don't think we'll get one from ecology. And it's, we've had a good relationship with Republic. As they said earlier. And we, we asked for an RFP because we wanted to see where we're at, what's going on. And we don't get apples to apples if you don't give us the apples.
Yeah.
I was just gonna say, I'm leaning towards option one because three million dollars is three million dollars. It, it is, and I know. Well, one, one point five times two.
Okay. All right, so.
So, but I, I mean, I, I can't justify to our residents a three million dollar increase. That's a lot. I mean, I know you said fifteen dollars a month, but that's not three million. I mean, our businesses would be probably in that.
Debbie.
So unfortunately, I wasn't here when, when we, when council. Um, asked the city to provide additional services. But what I'm hearing is that thing, two things that were important was the. Uh, mitigation for uh, labor dispute and inclement weather. And we don't have that in, in today's contract. But what if we did option number one? And then went back to Republic and said, you know, can, can you add these? Two. Uh, additional services to our contract with, I, I don't know if that would entail opening up the contract for it would. Okay. So how, how important was that? I mean, I, I understand the labor stoppage is a problem that happens all over the country. Um, and the inclement weather, we just come through that and we had a few glitches, but it, to me, didn't seem that awful.
So are you leaning toward one of the? With one of the options?
Are you looking at me?
Yes.
I'm, I'm leaning towards number one.
And to answer your question, I think it was a year ago, um, that there was like a two week work stoppage and. Um, there was quite a bit of uh. Excitement from the public, let's say that, um, asking about uh, our current. Waste hauler, our current um, contract. And that's what initiated this entire problem. Well, it's coming up for um, renegotiation. Let's put it out to bed. Uh, let me, Beth, could you have something? Go, go ahead, and then I'll get back to you, Joe.
The, the things that we potentially have issues with, that the work stops with, they're valid issues. But we know about them only because we were with Republic. We don't know what went on in these other companies. And maybe there were strikes in other companies that we know. That we don't. Incliment weather is something that is, you know, it's, it's across the board. I, I don't feel like we have all the information to be able to judge. Well, not judge so harshly. We see what we have, but. But I don't think we have all the facts from all the other companies. So I, I also. Lean towards option one. There's three million, fifteen dollars. Our, our residents had a. They threw a fit when it was just a couple of dollar increase. They really did. Um, I think I heard a lot about it. So I, I, I would hesitate to. Just so gladly increase, you know, the contract. I would say one of the reasons people were upset, and not everybody, because again, we haven't had problems with our garbage, so we're, we're not in that camp. But people have a hard ti- harder time paying more when they see service not being performed and that. I mean, I, having more of a year and two year service. Everybody understands that prices are going up. They just will. And if we get into a contract now, as Joe pointed out. We have two year, we're going to be locking in this lower rate now versus waiting and negotiating with anybody in two years. And it's going to be up, it's going to go up. So we have the potential of saving money in the long run if we enter into a, an agreement with a locked in right now. It's just something that we need to probably think about.
Were you leaning toward one?
I'm leaning towards two, to be honest with you, but. I would be, I'm, I'm supporting ones we had to. I just don't. I think we have to look at the whole picture. We're looking at ten years really, but we're looking at a long-term situation. And um. I, again, I would like to hear more about the track record of waste management. I think every company has its issues, ups and downs. I mean, it's, it's not going to be perfect and that's just. Part of the business.
Joe.
I, I hear what you're saying, Jennifer, on the three million dollars. And I, I don't want to raise rates. I don't. I'm, I voted against every rate increase we've had. I, I, and I will continue to vote against every rate increase we have. But the reason I say right now that, yeah, we're gonna, whatever we do. Because in two years, it's not three million dollars that it's going up. It's probably more because in a couple of years, who knows what the state's going to tell us we have to do. Who knows what's, what new issues are coming across the board? I don't, I don't think in two years it's a three, uh, three million dollar increase. I think in two years, it's more like four or five. But do I want to sit down and read the contract again? Yes. Do I want to sit down and double check what the extension says? Yes. Do I want us to make a brash decision? Uh, no, I do not. But right now, where I'm leaning to is. We. Just say, I'm leaning to option three right now. But I want to take the next month to read the contract again, ask more questions of staff. And ask the questions on what. What option one looks like also. But again, right now, if you had to. If we're voting right now, I'd say option three is my way to go. But like I said, I would. Reading everything again is not a bad idea for us.
Any other question? Okay. So when is our first meeting after the, the year? Ten, okay. Well, I know, well, it's kind of rough. That put us through Christmas, um, maybe some time, but that would give you time. To review these materials and think about these issues that you've been uh, asking about. So I guess what I'm hearing is that the council wants to make the decision on the January tenth meeting. That we like a little more time to review these materials and actually digest it a little better. Um, and then we'll come back ready in January to, to look at this.
Because I don't have the schedule directly in front of me, um, I would really like Jeff or Jeanette to jump in and say what a potential delay. Uh, to making a decision could look like and whether that's even feasible under our current procurement process.
So am I on?
Yeah.
Okay, I wasn't sure how the process worked. Um, so really, the main constraint we have. Is that if a, a contractor were to change under a new contract. Um, they need to procure new equipment typically and, and the, due to supply chain and everything else, trucks are taking. Fourteen to sixteen months to procure. So usually we try to get a con- contract in place um. And signed at least at that point so that they can take that uh, for financing and start mobilizing for taking over the contract. So really, if you work back from the end date of your contract, that's when um, something needs to be uh, in place. So I think January's okay. I think this would get very difficult to manage. If you started pushing into April, you know, if for some reason we got direction to negotiate uh, with Waste Management. We brought the results back, then the direction was, no, let's go back and, and uh, offer that contract to Republic, whatever might happen. You can kind of get, things go sideways when you start running that far out. But I think January the tenth is, is acceptable as far as I, I can see.
Any other?
Oh, sorry.
No, just, yeah, I want to make sure you consented, so, yeah. Okay.
I, I just want to, if I can, Mayor Pretend, confirm the, the material will be the same material we provided tonight, or are you looking for something?
Um, I mean, ideally, I would have liked to have some type of, you know, comparison between the two, but it sounds like that. Is extremely difficult, if not impossible, to do. So I think we'll just take the materials that we have. Was that correct, my assumption?
I, I think we could probably provide um, some of the terms that are. Uh, in addition that Waste Management provided, if you don't have a direct uh, contract.
There's a, it would be again, apples to oranges comparison of the different rates because Waste Management is proposing different amenities.
That helps us find out what we're getting for a dollar or so.
We can check with our consultants, see if that's something we can provide.
Um, and so, oh, yeah.
I just wanted to add, and I really don't want to make this complicated or difficult for you, but I am very focused on the price at the end of the day. And so I, is it possible to see average residential cost now? And or average business cost now versus what it would look like?
Jeff, would you mind jumping in and answering that question, please?
Uh, yes, we can provide that. Um, we've already started working a bit on that and I don't think there's a problem.
Okay, that would be really helpful. Thank you.
No, no worries. Uh, so. What I just said, um, if we can get that comparison with the cost, uh, and then we will make a decision on January tenth.
Thank you, Mayor Pretend and Council.
All right. Thank you. Okay. We can bring uh, Jeff back in.
Yeah, I know. I'm sure he does, so.
Welcome back, sir.
Thank you all very much.
So then I guess that concludes new business and we will move into future agenda items. Our next meeting is not until. Tuesday, January tenth. Let's move into council staff comments. Start with that.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Uh, this last Saturday, we had a shop top event. Um, big thank you to Maple Valley and Covington Lotheries for uh, really helping make that run smoothly. Uh, we had about a hundred and eighty kids that came through, um, which was right about where we wanted to be, so. It went really well. Uh, we also added an officer days ago. Uh, this first day is tonight, so um, we're still a patrol officer short. Yeah, a sergeant and an SRO, but. Uh, happy Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Don.
Um, just um, a little bit on what Andy had already indicated. We have a control inclement weather coming in next week, so just. Be aware of that. And obviously, we'll be doing whatever de-icing and things like that and, and prep of that as needed. Sit and have a happy Hollywood holidays and then.
Thank you. And I skipped Ethan online. Ethan? Sorry, Casey.
Uh, hi, Mayor. Hi, Council. Uh, I do have one update on the aquatic and recreation center project. Uh, as you know, the last couple of years, the city has been working on planning and feasibility work. Uh, to kind of find a solution towards the aging aquatic center. Uh, we completed the twenty twenty one feasibility study. Um, with Maple Valley. And now that they've bowed out of the partnership, Covington is still continuing uh, the planning and feasibility work. Uh, and we're looking at, uh, we're continuing to look at a new facility solution, but also revisiting uh, an option of. Uh, that would be looking at a renovation or expansion of the existing aquatic center. Uh, the funding was for this project or this work has been through a state commerce grant. Uh, but we did have to adjust the scope uh, to continue to access the funds for this next phase of planning and feasibility work. This was more challenging than we anticipated, but uh, with the help of Regan and Breon and Holly at GTH, we were successful on making this change. To the grant scope. Um, and that grant agreement amendment was executed this past week. Um, so that's all good news. Uh, we are moving ahead with bringing on a consultant team to help with that next phase of work. Um, and we anticipate bringing that consultant contract to council in January. Uh, and that's really all I have. Uh, and just wish everybody uh, a great holiday.
Thanks, Ethan. Selena.
Hi, good evening, Council and Mayor. I just have a couple announcements. Um, the first thing that I wanted to do is just thank our Lake Point. Uh, team for coming up today, uh, Brookfield and Toll. Um, you know, we are excited to be working with them. And um, as from the planning perspective, we're kind of looking at ways that we can be ready and prepared for them as they come in. And some of that work was done tonight with some of the contracts that were approved. Um, so I think we're going to be learning and trying to do our best to get ready for this project. Um, they have submitted a pre-application meeting for about three hundred and thirty units of housing. Um, they do have the intention to go through, um, as they're building the road to get some preliminary plaques ready. So once that road is open, utilities are available, they can begin their construction. So um, you, you probably will catch wind of that uh, pre-app coming in. So we'll be working with them to get that through the preliminary plat process. So again, just um, appreciate their open communication. I'm glad they were able to come tonight. Um, the other thing that I just also want to mention is um, community development with the assistance of Adam. With the, with Chief Easterbrook and his team, we're going to be launching a SEP Ed campaign. Um, and we're going to talk more about this in the summit of kind of some of the pre-work that we're going to be doing to set up some tools, have a web-based. Uh, presence so that businesses can start to understand and learn about ways that they can participate. Um, utilizing SEP Ed tools. So um, Tony, our assistant planner in community development, he is going to be working with Carla. To get our first article up, to get our webpage up. And we're hoping that's going to be done by the end of the year. So as soon as that is online, we'll share that. And obviously, the chief and I will be talking more about the program and kind of some work ahead. And then lastly, I just want to wish you all a great holiday season. I hope that you have a good time. And however you choose to celebrate that. And I look forward to seeing you all in the new year.
Thank you, Selena. Casey.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I just wanted to mention a couple of areas. We not have seen yet. Uh, invitation from the auditor's office for the exit conference. It's scheduled on December twentieth at nine eighteen. Teams invite for us. Uh, if you could let Chris or I know if you'll be attending for the meeting. So we're meeting all of our forum requirements. And just happy holidays. Thank you, everybody. Bye. And then just have a happy holidays. Everybody, bye. Thank you.
Thanks, Casey. Mark.
We do have an executive session tonight to review the performance of a public employee pursuant to R C W forty-two thirty, one-one-zero, sub-one, sub-little G. And just as a reminder, the mayor would let us know the time that he believes it's out, and I have no further reports. Wish everyone a happy holidays and stay safe and warm.
Thanks, Mark. Regan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, can you believe this is our last council meeting of twenty twenty-two? It's just ridiculous, but uh, it's been really a wonderful and amazing year of working with this council and, and the staff and this community. Uh, so thank you for that. Um, one item, I, Jeff, I believe you'll be bringing this up about the voting delegate for S E A. Uh, we need to get that information in tonight. Uh, and other than that, uh, thank you very much. It's been a wonderful year.
Thanks, Regan. Krista.
I will just second what Regan said about working with a great council and staff, and I just wanted to say happy holidays.
Thanks, Krista.
Always get caught off guard. Can I be last one of these times? Just throw me off guard.
One of these days.
One of these days. Um, I, I also cannot believe that it's the last council meeting of the year. Um, what an honor it is to, to work with each one of you. We have the most amazing staff. I brag about you guys everywhere, everyone, actually, um, everywhere I go. But, um, over the last three weeks, I think it was since we had our, our previous council meeting, I had the honor of serving at the storehouse a couple of times, and my goodness. Sometimes you think you're blessing people, but you walk away far more blessed than anything, you know, you could have given them. And I did not know there was such a need for interpretation into Ukrainian. I was shook by the amount of people who literally spoke zero English. Um, and then we had an amazing, amazing event on Saturday at the storehouse. Um, families were surprised, actually. They just thought they were coming in just, just for an event, um, but walked out with bags full of gifts, um, and even gift cards that they did not know they were going to get. Um, it was just, it was so cool to see people's eyes and faces light up, and so many bikes were taken home. Um, and I got all my steps in between running from the storehouse to the front, to the, to the gift room. I, I felt so, so special that day. But, um, it was just such a cool thing. I told my family about it and all my friends, and actually, a lot of them were coming back on the nineteenth. Um, to help interpret, to just do a bunch of things and hopefully moving forward. Um, but it has been an awesome year. I love you all dearly. Merry Christmas and a happy new year.
Thanks, Christina. Beth.
I just, I just want to say, I think that twenty twenty-two really, like, we're coming out of the COVID and trying to reimagine what our work is looking like, our workspaces, um, our workload, and as a council, we really, we really pushed on staff to do some things outside of the box that we haven't with the street meet, meetups and safety meetups and all of the things that we're trying to, to do to set the framework for moving forward. And I just, I just want to say thank you so much to Regan and all of the staff that have supported, given us reports, shown up to these events. It's just been amazing, and, um, I feel really proud to be part of our city uh, and to have you all and all the hard work that you do. It's just amazing. And also, at Shop With A Cop, I, that was just so fantastic to see, um, our officers rewriting some of that narrative for some of those, um, kids and families that may not always have a pleasant experience, and, um, it's just been, it was fantastic seeing that camaraderie and the positive impact. So again, thank you so much. Happy holidays.
Thanks, Beth. Sean.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Beth, that was well said. Yeah, that's good. Appreciate it. Uh, enjoyed the tree lighting, and I thought that was great as well. Nice to see how that event is growing and how public is responding and really starting to look forward to it as well, and so uh, really appreciated that. Um, Andy Jenkins mentioned the Alert King County. Do you know what that is actually? Because I just looked, and they don't have an app. They have a King County connects. Is that what he's talking about?
Actually, King County Alert, we're on.
Oh, sign up. Is it a, a, not listed?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. That's good to know. Um, well, thank you, everyone, tonight for coming out. Appreciate, um, we saw and heard the deliberations, but it was well thought. We appreciate everyone's uh, participation in the process, so just going to say that. And then also, I'm real glad that we sort of passed the budget tonight, and, uh, uh, most notably, the, the pickleball tournament. So I already have people talking about it and asking about it. I was just down in San Francisco, and as you can imagine, pickleball is huge down there, and I talked to some of my pickleball friends, and they're incredibly jealous that we're looking to have an indoor tournament to start and to get this kick-started, so, um, yeah, so I'm excited about that. Thank you, and happy holidays to everyone as well.
I think since you brought it forward, you should be the one to pick it off.
Okay, okay with that.
No, he, he's saying that you have to be on one of the teams.
No, I probably will be. Yeah, but, yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
I want to thank, um, Councilmember Soltes and Councilmember Hardja Housen for helping out at the Storehouse Family Event on Saturday. We, um, had invited three hundred families. We, we had some no-shows, but just a little under three hundred families came in, and as Christina already talked about, they were very, very blessed, and that was, um, largely due to the the business community and, um, some other individuals that stepped up, that we had a lot of, um, donations that made that possible. Nearly twenty-five thousand dollars was raised to be able to give those gifts and those gift cards. So my thanks, um, to have, have some, um, friends there. And I was also honored to help Mayor Wagner light the tree. I'm thinking that was probably my last official duty as the uh, citizen of the year. I, I thought that that ended with the parade, but anyway, I think that would be the last one.
Well, you got a handoff here.
Oh, that's it.
Yeah.
Um, and then I just wanted to say, uh, in our meeting today with the skateboard, um, we finalized our legislative agenda, and, um, just one item, item of note was, um, putting some language in um, for the assessment for the new location, for the, the assessment for the location for the new airport. Um, we asked that, that there be, um, communication, uh, coordination with the local, um, municipalities, uh, because there, there wasn't when it kind of hit, you know, sideways when, when it was going to be there. I know, we just don't know where it might be, but anyway, we did put a little bit of language in there to ask that there be some coordinating communication, um, so that no city would be surprised if I know it's going to be in there backwards. Um, that's all I had to say, but I want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and thank you for letting me be part of this great team.
Um, yes, Storehouse event was amazing. Uh, I got to be on the welcome crew and slash gatekeeper, basically letting people in and out, and so I, I got to talk to a ton of families out there as they're waiting in line, and it's and hearing your comment twenty-five thousand dollars, I didn't realize it was that much, but what a true example of our businesses and our residents coming together to support our community, all right there in that just few-hour period. I mean, it, it just really like sets, sets the season off to a great, amazing start. And, um, uh, December is my favorite time of year. I'm a little Christmas nerd, where we got the house all lit up and everything, and Covington just does such a great job. It's so positive and every, I went to the Santa breakfast. It was just like old times. That hasn't happened in years. It was, it was really slow, so hopefully people start going back to that, and we had a little Girl Scout tour at Fred Meyer to do some holiday shopping for, um, Storehouse, and they did an amazing job with this troop. I mean, a, above and beyond Coco. They got to stop the dairy cooler. They got to see the security camera, and it's just like every interaction I have around our city is is ninety-nine point nine percent amazing and positive, and that really starts with our, our staff and, and building, you know, what we're always talking about, our mission goals and objectives. We're going to make it amazing, you know? It, it's, it's just fascinating to, to, to see it in life. Thank you, everyone.
Thanks, Jennifer. Joe.
So I missed the tree lighting. Brian had his first basketball game that night, so I got to go watch that. And then I, um, we have PIC tomorrow night, and at PIC, we get to approve the board and committee appointments, uh, since I am no longer going to be the member, the member for skip for the city. I figured I had to continue to do something to try to fight homelessness, and I am now an alternate on the Affordable Housing Committee. Uh, there are still a bunch of openings. If anyone wants to, uh, discuss the King County Law Enforcement Officers and Firefighters Plan One Disability Retirement Board, there is no one there, and I'm sure a lot of retired police officers would really like to make sure they keep their retirement stuff. So if anyone would like to be on that one. Uh, but there's a lot of openings still on the, on the S E A committees. You have any questions, um, please feel free to ask me or send a question out to S E A. Other than that, I am very happy to have been on this council this year. We have gone through a lot. Uh, the retirement of one council member, the appointment of another, and the ability to meet in person again. I swear to you, if I hear one more time that we, oh, it's a, it's a meeting and online, I might rip out my hair. Uh, but I'm so happy to be meeting in person again. I am thankful for the debate we had tonight on, uh, on waste, on garbage. Uh, it's, we're going to find way, places where we disagree. We're going to find places where we agree, and I think that's that's where the camaraderie between us happens. Thankful for you, for the staff, thankful for everyone out there, and I am going to say, stay warm, have a safe Christmas, have a wonderful Hanukkah, and happy Kwanzaa. And have a great new year. Don't blow your hands up with fireworks, because they're illegal in Covington.
Thanks, Joe.
I forgot to thank Public Works. Seriously, I have such an appreciation, uh, for our Public Works team. Thank you very much because, uh, I'm, I just appreciate all of the layers of logistics and just keeping our roads safe. It's really comforting to go out and feel like, yeah, we're not going to slide off road. That's it, sorry.
No, no problem. And speaking of Public Works, they helped assist with the tree lighting and make sure everything was ported off and worked well. So I just appreciate seeing people at the tree lighting. This, the past two years, it was just my family and I doing a virtual tree lighting in front of the roundabouts. It was nice to see as many people as we did. Um, Sound Cities, the board elections are this Thursday at noon for the South Caucus. I wanted to give an opportunity, if anybody here on the council was going, if they wanted to be our voting member, otherwise I will be there and I'm happy to be the voting member. But just wanted to give that opportunity to anybody. Okay, so is it consensus that's, okay? All right, Krista, send it off to Leah. Yep. Uh, speaking of S E A, uh, I am finished my last finance meeting. It's treasurer. And next week, um, I will be attending my last board meeting for Sound Cities. So it, uh, we will see, we have some good candidates who will be running for the board, uh, for next year, so we will see who, um, does get selected for that. Shop With A Cop was awesome event. I'm just seeing the smiles. I don't know who smiled more, the kids that were shopping or the officers that were helping each of the kids select. Um, and then having Rotary and, um, Soup Ladies and everybody else there was, it was great to see everything. So it was nice. I don't have any other thing, except I want to say thanks again to our, everybody on our team, our staff, for everything that they do. The city cannot operate without all the due diligence and hard work that each of you do, to everybody on our council. Like every one of you have said, it is such a pleasure and an honor to work with each of you throughout the year, seeing everybody get involved with this community and giving back. We're servant leaders and helping make sure that things work. And then to all of our residents, businesses out there, thanking you for allowing us to serve and thanking you for living and choosing to be in Covington. And with that, we will go into our second public comment period. Speakers will state their name, address, and organization. Comments directed to the city council, not the audience or staff. Comments are not intended for conversation or debate and are limited to no more than four minutes per speaker. Is there anybody in the audience wishing to address council this evening? Is there anybody online wishing to address council this evening? Please raise your hand. Seeing nobody raise their hand, we will go into an executive session to review the performance of a public employee pursuant to R C W forty-two dot three zero dot one-one-zero subsection one, subsection little G for sixty minutes, returning at approximately ten oh six, with no further business be conducted at that time. Thank you all very much for being here tonight. Good evening, everybody. We are out of executive session, and no further action is being taken, and this meeting is now adjourned. Thank you all very much. Happy holidays.